Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And I would like to thank you, thank Mr. Gene Perry for our prelude music. Thank you. He's back in the corner. For our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Luke Kirkendall, Southwest Christian Center. Pastor Luke, are you here? Pastor Luke, all right, come forward, please. That will be followed by the flag salute by Councilmember Washington. So if you'd please stand for the invocation, followed by the flag salute.
Thank you very much. Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Holy God, you seem to establish all things in an orderly fashion. You reveal your glory to creation through a myriad of means. And in your sovereignty, you have chosen to allow men and women to govern themselves. You have appointed men and women to represent their fellow man. And Lord, tonight, I pray that this body of men and women would represent their fellow men in a gracious way and for man's benefit. May they resist the urge to represent men like the first man, Adam, did, and thus bring sin upon the world. Instead, may they represent men in a beneficial way, like the second Adam, like Christ Himself. Jesus took on the sins of a people who did not deserve His kindness. He did the good that they could not do themselves, and His representation brought salvation to sinful man. May these representatives before me lay down their own desires and pursue the high calling that you have granted them. May they put others first. May they faithfully care for those created in your image. And we plead these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. It is an honor and a privilege to recite our pledge. Please join me by placing your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comachero?
Here.
Councilmember Nagar?
I'm very pleased to be here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
I'm here.
And Council, or Mayor Edwards?
Here.
We have some very special presentations and proclamations this week. It is something I know you've all been waiting for anxiously. It is National Public Works Week!
Calm down, Tom. Calm down.
So who's going to be the recipient of this proclamation?
I will be your honor.
Would that be you, Mr. Tom? All right. So we will ask Mayor Protem Comachero to do the honors. And we have spared no expense on the framing. So, "City of Temecula Proclamation for National Public Works Week." How many of you know what public works are, or is, public works?
I know, I know.
If we didn't have public works, we wouldn't have streets, roads, bridges, parks. So, "Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives; and whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, land development, storm-water management, public buildings, grounds, parks, and infrastructure maintenance; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public works personnel; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform." Now therefore, I, Mary Ann Edwards, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2014, to be National Public Works Week, building for today, planning for tomorrow. So, thank you very much, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Temecula. So perhaps you'd like to give a little presentation, tell us what's going on in public works. There's a lot going on.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, on behalf of Temecula's Public Works Department, I'd like to thank you for the city's recognition of Public Works Week. This is an opportunity to recognize those people who put the civil in civilization.
Yeah.
The people who designed, built, maintained the roads, bridges, buildings, parks, and other features that make this city a great place to live, work, shop, and visit. You're seeing the results of the hard work from your dedicated staff with the recent accomplishments, including the opening of the French Valley Off-Ramp, the completion and opening of the Main Street Bridge, and coming up in June, we'll be opening the Butterfield Stage Road extension. I would like to thank all of the staff in public works for their dedication to the city and to the department, and thank again the City Council and the mayor for honoring us with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We get questions every day about, when is Butterfield Stage going to open? And prior to that, we got questions about the new off-ramps off of the I-15. So thank you very much. Very, very vital to a free-flowing city and our quality of life. So our next presentation is for a very, very special lady that I met with last week. Kenzie, is Kenzie here? I don't know if she is or not. I saw her last night at school. If she is not, I'm going to read this to you anyway. I don't know why she wouldn't be here, but this young woman has done something very special. So just let me read this to you. It's a certificate of achievement. Kenzie Hall. "We congratulate Kenzie Hall, as one of five youths from a pool of 1,000 nominees nationwide, presented the Military Child of the Year Award. From San Antonio-based Operation Homefront, Kenzie's hard work and fortitude began at age 11 when she formed BRAT PAC-11, a social networking platform for a school-based group. The group began as a resource to help military 'brats,' and that's in quotes, that's an endearing term, connect and adapt to their new surroundings. In 2013, Kenzie expanded BRAT PAC-11 into a nonprofit to grant wishes and support outings and recreational activities for children of military families who've lost a parent, have had a parent injured, or have been apart from them for an extended period of time. Her goal is to bring BRAT PAC-11 chapters into schools across the country where there's a significant military population. We appreciate Kenzie's leadership and heartfelt dedication to serving military children in our community and nationwide, and wish her continued success in achieving her future goals." So I met with her last week. She is an amazing young woman, and I actually happened to meet with her little sister when I gave a talk at Tony Tobin Elementary, maybe the following day. So I'm going to make sure that Kenzie gets back to receive this in person, because I really want you to meet her. She is a brat, and that's how she refers to herself. Her father's in the military, and she's traveled extensively because of his military service. And she wanted to make sure that other children of military families had a comfort level everywhere they went. So she thought it was important to form this nonprofit, to raise money, to help with their comfort level in the schools that they attended. And I thought it was a remarkable achievement, and so this is why we honor her tonight. And we're going to make sure she comes back, so that we can give this to her in person. So let's, I'm going to give her a round of applause for Kenzie Hall. And we have some very, very special guests with us this evening. Our second family from Dyson, and I'm going to give this to Mayor Protem Comachero to come down and present to you. And if our special guest would come forward, so that we can recognize you and honor you. Cozo, can you help us out? Welcome. So this is from the City of Temecula. A certificate of welcome. On behalf of the citizens and council members of the City of Temecula, we would like to extend a warm welcome and wish a memorable visit to the dignitaries and friends from Dyson, Japan. We offer this token of greetings, welcome, and friendship as we celebrate the 20th anniversary of our longstanding relationship. So welcome again to Temecula, and we offer our greetings. So Mayor Protem Comachero has your certificate, and I understand that you have a message for us.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
But I can not speak English. A little speak looking paper, okay?
Sure, yes. I cannot speak Japanese.
Thank you. Good evening. Honorable Mayor Mary Ann Edwards, Temecula Councilmember, City Staff and Members of Temecula Sister City Association. I am Mayor Masnory Morita, from the town of Dyson, Japan, which is a sister city of We are honored to be attending the council meeting tonight. The dedication, and I just arrived in Temecula today, and will stay with host family for five days.
Oh, thank you.
We all look forward to celebrating the 20th anniversary of our sister city. Thank you very much. Arigato.
That was very good! Mr. Roberts, while they're coming forward, is there anything you'd like to say? Are you hosting?
Oh, yes.
Yes, I thought you might be.
Well, this started 20 years ago when, wonderful. Arigato. Thank you. Anyway, this, over 20 years ago, we had a delegation from, actually it was Nakayama at that time. What's happened since then is three cities have come together, now they're called Dyson, but it was at that time, over 20 years ago, it was Nakayama. And they were actually looking for a sister city that was close to their city. They produce, in the area, the best broccoli in Japan, and actually in the world, very, very expensive, but top quality. Also, other produce. They do it by using old ways, and not using a lot of insecticide and stuff like we do. And what they were looking for in California was another city that was close to what they did. Now, they went to two cities. They went to the city called Brawley, which is very close to the Colorado River, and Brawley does have a lot of produce that's produced there. But that's pretty much all they have, and not too much of the city. It's very small. And then they came back, and we met for about three days here in Temecula. And after three days, after we took them to the wine country and introduced a lot of things to them that we had, they said they would come, they would let us know their decision. And a couple of months after that, they, we had a decision. We put it before the City Council, and at that time, it was our sister city. And it's been that way ever since. I know that some of us have gone more than others, because I had pretty much retired, and I could take longer times off than others on the City Council, where it takes two days just to get to Dyson. So I've probably been there about 14 times, maybe 13 or 14 times, and we have established a great relationship, to the point where I have family, we have close friends, families who come to visit us, and we visit them, and we go on vacations together. And I'm just proud that we've got to the 20th anniversary time, because I have never seen such a great relationship with two cities than I've had with these two cities. And I'm very proud of it. I think we are kind of the model for the way sister cities should be operated, and not just like the city of, well, Riverside. I think they have 20 other sister cities, but they never go. It's just a symbolism, and ours is not a symbolism. Our relationship is just as strong now as it was 20 years ago. So that's kind of a quick overview of why we do it and why we should continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anyone else? So thank you again very much. Thank you. We're headed into public comments, then. "A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes." Right. Bye-bye.
They're very tired. They're very tired.
Very tired. Big day?
They're tired. They've been traveling a long time.
Oh, been traveling.
Yes.
All right. So now that we've read the disclaimers, it's time for city, any public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two public comments. The first speaker is Lyle Wells, to be followed by Wayne Hall.
All right. Good evening.
Hello again. All right, how are you, Council?
Good.
Back. I'm, where is it? I want to talk to you guys about a new taxi municipal code that takes effect, signed in a few months ago. There's a subsection about acceptability of insurers. Says insurance to be placed with insurers with current AM best rating of A-minus-seven or better, unless otherwise accepted the city. Self-insurance unacceptable, blah, blah, blah. This takes effect July 1st. The problem is, is our, a lot of our, I know mine, our policy doesn't take, doesn't change until December. So we'd have to, we would be forced to forfeit our current policy that we just resigned and is currently valid in December. These policies take thousands of dollars to get started and going. We've talked to Mr. Cardenas in detail about, you know, if this can be, if we can see the end of our policy and then go into it, and then make changes then, to avoid any kind of, you know, problems. So I guess what I'm asking is, if there's any way we can, there can be some kind of concession, as far as when these policies can be forced to take change, because ours obviously doesn't take change July 31st. Wish it would be, but doesn't. Yeah, I think that's about it.
All right, Mr. Wells, I understand what it is, what your concerns are, and what your, you know, the answers that you're looking for. We can't discuss it right now, but I will, we'll refer back to staff, and then someone will get back to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Your bridge looks good.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hall, good evening.
I've been sent here by an elder.
By who?
An elder from, I was at a prayer breakfast, south and east of Temecula, and we had a prayer breakfast, and it was shortly after the politically correct Supreme Court came out and said that the city of Temecula has been following the law. It is constitutional that we have a prayer before we have our meeting. And my friend asked me to ask, to tell you, that in her area, they stopped. They were afraid. I contacted the city clerk, and she, I asked her, how many letters did the city of Temecula receive scolding the city and saying that they'd probably sue us, or the city, if they continued on this Christian thing? And I think there was three, I think you mentioned, and I'm, oh, this is over a 10-year period, too, so it's not a lot of them, but I was just so proud, again, that we weren't breaking the law, we were constitutional, saying a prayer before our meetings. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne. And no further comments? That's it?
That's it.
All right. Then moving on to City Council reports, and as of this moment, I have
I'm trying.
Nobody in the queue. I see you all trying.
Just call.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay.
Mr. Washington, are you trying, too? Okay.
There's too many things to
Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Okay, thank you. Normally, I don't say too much, public comments or council comments, but I just had to say something tonight. I just, my wife and I just returned from my granddaughter's graduation from NEU, Northern Arizona University, and I'm so proud of her, and I want to get this on tape and then send it to her
Oh.
On it. She graduated this weekend from NEU with a double major in special needs students and elementary students. And I can't think of a better person to be in this position than her. She knows, she's got it together, and I could see that from the start. My wife and I are very proud of her accomplishments, and I intend, as I said, I'm going to tape this, and I'm going to send it to her, because she's a keeper, she really is. Thank you.
Aw, grampy, that's so nice. Very nice. Mr. Washington?
I just have a couple of brief reports. Last week, pardon me, I traveled to Washington, D.C., arriving Monday evening, came home Thursday evening with a regional group representing some regional issues, and we had 15 meetings in three days. It was a very aggressive and busy schedule. We met with congressmen and one senator, and I think we're going to see some production out of that trip. A lot of our reception was very favorable. Next week, staff heads over to the International Council of Shopping Centers Annual Conference in Vegas. Some staff is going over on Saturday. The city manager and I will be going over early Sunday morning, and will spend three days over there, trying to bring back additional retail
Cheesecake Factory.
And retail dollars and cheesecake
Cheesecake Factory.
Don't, you know what? I said something at my State of the City in 2007, and I'm still getting in, out of that hot water, about a Nordstrom.
I know. We're halfway there.
Yeah. We'll see what we can bring back to Temecula, and so I think it'll be a productive trip. We're always well-received. Temecula's reputation precedes it, and so I think we'll be very productive at the conference.
Good luck. Anyone else? Mr. Comachero?
I really don't have anything much tonight, but, Mr. Washington, two words for you. Whole foods.
Oh, yeah, that's we good, too. Whole foods. Whole foods.
Must be nice to be retired now. You know, you take
Mr. Nagar, anything? Nope. It's been a very busy couple of weeks in Temecula. We have cut the ribbon on the new off-ramp off the I-15. We dedicated and opened the new Old Bridge in Old Town on Main Street. We opened the Fletcher Jones Mercedes dealership at the north end of town. We helped Marietta open the Inez connection through to Marietta. That was very exciting, and I urged them to work with us and open Diaz Road as well. Am I forgetting anything?
Yes.
Yeah, no. Anything? Anything? That's all I can think of right now.
It's enough now.
Yeah, that's enough. So congratulations, Public Works Week. What am I forgetting?
The Truax.
Oh, yeah, the Truax Building. The Truax Building was opened in Old Town.
We also did a photo op for the, sort of the groundbreaking of TV2
Yeah.
For the upstairs for Cal State San Marcos
Yeah.
Last week as well.
Yeah, Cal State San Marcos and Mount San Jacinto College partnering on the second floor, where you can get a four-year degree, starting with Mount San Jacinto College and finishing with Cal State San Marcos. So it's been busy, and the rest of this year is going to continue to be busy. So let's take a quick poll. How many Pumas are here? No Pumas? How many Wolfpackers are here? See, no? No? Go Bears? Oh, my gosh! So is it Mr. Wasz class?
No.
All of you?
No.
No? Okay, who else?
Rico.
Oh, Rico, all right. So tell them we said hi. And you can't leave for an hour, right? Total hour unless we get out of here early.
That's mean.
All right. So moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar or for separate action. Item number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, city treasurer's report as of March 31st, 2014. Number five, approval of election resolutions. Number six, County of Riverside Home Consortium Agreement, Long Range Planning Project Number Number seven, amendments to annual agreements for various services required by the Department of Public Works, Capital Improvements Project, CIP, Division for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Number eight, amendments to annual agreements for various services required by the Public Works Maintenance Division for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Number nine, approval of a license agreement between the City of Temecula and Habitat for Humanity, Inland Valley, for the use of city property for limited parking. And, Mr. Roberts, you're going to abstain on that one?
That's why I have my light on, yes.
Okay.
I have to, because I am on the Board of Directors of Habitat
Then the record will reflect an abstention from Mr. Roberts, because he serves on the Board of Directors for Habitat for Humanity. Number 10, contingency increase for Main Street Bridge over Marietta Creek Replacement, PW03-05. And number 11, approval of project application for the 2014 Active Transportation Program, ATP Cycle 1. Ding.
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
Just one quick item. Councilmember Roberts does not leave, need to leave the room, because this item's on the consent calendar.
All right. So we record an abstention, but he can remain in the room. I need a motion and a second.
We do have one speaker?
Okay. So we have one speaker. Rick Vander Linden?
Vander Linden, on item 11.
All right. Okay, so then perhaps we could take the remaining items, 1 through 10?
Move 1 to 10.
1 to 10? Okay. A motion and a second? Do we get a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor on 1 through 10?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Then let's go ahead and take the speaker on items number, on item number 11. Chuck was second.
Who was the mover?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Oh, we got votes now. You want us to go ahead and record?
Yes, please.
Did I have a little too much coffee for dinner?
You're fine.
All right. Now we're ready for item number 11, which is approval of project application for the 2014 Active Transportation Program, ATP Cycle 1. Do we have a staff report?
Mr. Garcia, do you want to provide a brief staff report, or?
This item allows the city to apply for an ATP grant, to complete a trail connection that is part of the regional trail program. There are two opportunities for this grant. One is local, one is regional, the other is statewide. We believe the project in question is applicable to both phases, or both opportunities for the grant. I would love to say the name of the creek, and I'm sure that I would mispronounce it.
All right.
Santa Tru, this creek.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any questions of staff? If none, then we can have our public comments or our speaker, please.
Rick Vander Linden?
Mr. Vander Linden, good evening.
Hello, Mary Edwards. Yes, I'm Rick Vander Linden, councilmembers and staff. I'm here to say that I support this. As I was hearing, Mary Edwards As I was hearing Mayor Edwards, she said free-flowing and quality of life when she was talking to you, and I thought cycling. That's what it is. Free-flowing and quality of life, cycling. And I'm looking right behind us, old traditions and new opportunity. Cycling has been around for a long time. You know, it's an old tradition, and as a local cyclist, I kind of represent the community of those that commute to work, those that raise our kids on the back of our bicycles, those that go to the store on our bikes. Washington and Hagar were actually pedaling around with us this weekend as we toured through and we saw Sheroes. That was another one that was on the list of all the great things you put in place. There's the signs at each side of Old Town with the Sheroes that are opened up for cyclists to safely move through town, which gives us a whole other loop to transfer around through the community. So, all I wanted to say was thank you. I really appreciate -- we all appreciate what you're doing and support any movement towards promoting cycling as a healthy way of getting around.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. No further comments?
I'll move approval and
Second.
Dad, one quick comment.
Mr. Roberts?
This project, if I remember right, the Active Transportation Program is going through SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. Is that correct? And it's a quick turnaround, and I know our staff is on it, and I know staff is also working with SCAG on it right now on their project manager. But the funding is good. The funding is there, and it's for us to lose, and I don't want us to lose it.
No.
So, I know staff, on this particular one, when they found out about it, it was immediately -- they got on it real quick. But there's a lot involved for a good thing, so let's hope it happens.
Good job. So, we have a motion?
I have a comment.
I second it.
Oh, do you have a comment?
Yeah.
Mr. Washington?
I made my motion. He's seconded it.
All right.
Rick, thanks for coming out and thanks for being there on Saturday. We had fun, even though Mr. Nigar didn't -- wasn't able to finish with us. He needed to do an extra 10 miles on his own.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
He's like that. And Zach, I see you back there hiding, Zach Swank. One of our commissioners was very instrumental, and we talked about the grant, and so we think we've got a good shot at it. So, thanks to staff for putting it in. Appreciate it.
So, that's what you were doing when I saw you at City Hall, huh? Right? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, so we have a motion, a second, and everyone cast your votes, please. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. So, I will recess the City Council meeting to the scheduled meetings of Community Service District, Sessor Agency, Temecula Redevelopment Agency, and Temecula Housing Authority, and Public Financing Authority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight, so we can dispense with roll call. Are there any public comments under this portion?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. We only have one item under consent calendar on community services tonight. That's item 12, approval of the action minutes
Move approval.
Of April 22nd. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion carries 5-0. How about a directors' report tonight?
A brief report, Mr. President. Thanks. This Thursday, May 15th, at 4:00 p.m., please join us as we celebrate the 20-year friendship with our sister city, Dyson Japan.
Would you clarify the dates? We have two dates on here. Are they the same thing? May 17th and then rededication of the Japanese garden, May 15?
There's two things going on. Okay. I'm sorry. So, at 4:00 p.m., please join us as we celebrate the 20-year friendship with our sister city, Dyson, and the rededication of the beautiful Japanese garden at the Temecula Duck Pond. The celebration will continue in the form of a wonderful Japanese festival here at the Civic Center on Saturday, May 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The event will celebrate elements of Japanese culture, from traditional food to entertainment, crafts, games, and demonstrations. And of course, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, marks the return of Western days here in Old Town. Zany gunslingers will bring the Wild, Wild West back to life, which is really great.
Zany.
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 Yes. There will also be a walking tour from the Temecula Valley Museum on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and don't forget the High Noon Bank robbery and ICS Chili Cook-Off on Sunday, plus plenty of fun for the entire family. And just a reminder, as we enjoy many fun-filled events, we will also be remembering our nation's bravest on Memorial Day. So, don't forget to join us on Monday, May 26th, from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. for procession along Main Street, followed by a short program on the steps of City Hall. And with that, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Aaron, anything further, General Manager?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
We have any comments from any board members?
Move adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Can I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any objection? We are adjourned.
All right, then, I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we're going to go to public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. It's item number 13, a proposed ordinance to adopt an amendment to the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, TUMF, ordinance to exempt new specially-adapted homes for severely disabled veterans. So, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a brief presentation, and I'm going to ask Mr. Dale West to overview the project with the council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards. The Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or TUMF, program was adopted by City Council at the City of Temecula in 2003. The TUMF program is administered by WR COG on behalf of 17 cities now, the County of Riverside, and the March Joint Powers Authority within Western Riverside County. TUMF program, the purpose of that is it ensures that the future residence -- or future residential, commercial, industrial development pays its fair share for the increased traffic impacts that it creates and the corresponding needed improvements to the regional system of highways and arterials. The current fee schedule for single-family residential, this may be a little bit difficult to read, but the one that I want to point out on the slide is the top row, single-family residential, it currently is at $8,873. That's the TUMF fee for new residential development. The proposed exemption tonight is new single-family homes constructed by nonprofit organizations specifically adapted and designed for maximum freedom of movement and independent living for qualified disabled veterans. A disabled veteran is defined as any veteran who is retired or is in the process of medical retirement from military service, who is or was severely injured in a theater of combat operations, and has or received a letter of eligibility for the Veterans Administration Specifically Adapted Housing Grant Program. Staff has determined that this proposed amendment to the TUMF ordinance, which is Chapter 15.08 of the Temecula Municipal Code, is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act as -- is not a project as defined by SEQA. And the recommendation before you is to read, introduce and read by title the ordinance that was in your staff report and presented to you tonight. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions? No? No one? All right. So, then, I'll open the public hearing, and is anyone -- did anyone file a request to speak?
We have one request to speak by Wayne Hall.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
I'm going to put on a different hat tonight. I'm a retired military -- Marine out of Camp Pendleton. I was the 5th Marines. We're the guys who go in and clean up the mess afterwards. I want to make a clarification here. The majority of the people that are going to be asking for these houses, what are their average ages? Between 17 and 35. Most are not officers. There are a few field-grade, sorry, company-grade officers, captain or below. There'll be a few old guys like me, the old gunny, but the vast majority of these are going to be young men and women with unbelievably, you know, obviously missing legs, missing arms, or a variety of things. Now, when they leave the military as an E4, E5, or E6, that's the end of it. I mean, that's the end of their pay grade. That's the money they get for the rest of their lives because they're disabled. They don't get a pay raise. They don't get a lot of money. This is just one more little thing that makes it easier for our veterans coming back. If you've ever seen one of these houses, like I'm sure we have, we have a young man here in Temecula already, but the amount of money it costs for these special cabinets and drawers and other things, let's say, are enormous. You know, they're not cheap, and nobody gives anything away except a few good people. But the vast majority is going to be paid for, and they're expensive. This is one more thing to help out the vets. And I was supposed to say something else, but I'm a little -- I think all I can really say is walk a mile in their shoes, or some don't even have shoes because they have no need for them. Just keep them in mind. And their ages, these are, what, 25, 24, 23, young men and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Mr. Comerow?
I just want to heartily move that we approve item 13, and I think the speaker said it very well. It's not going to build a house, and it's not going to appreciably change the fact that that house will be built, but it will make it easier, not only on the veteran himself or herself, but on those who are volunteering their time, support, and materials, and money to build those houses, and I think it's the least we can do.
Thank you.
I'll second that. I have a request to speak.
It's okay. I have a motion and a second, and I can go ahead and close the public hearing since we have no further comments. So, go ahead, Mr. Washington.
Wayne, I wholeheartedly support everything you said. The item came before WR COG, which I represent the city at WR COG, before the amendment was sent out to each member city to adopt. I have a couple of problems with what we're offering up for our wounded veterans, but this is the place that we had to start, and I'm hoping to add to this. I will work hard to add to this. If anyone read the staff report and happened to notice, the fiscal impact of the program is a million dollars. The TUMF program is a four-and-a-half-billion-dollar program. So, a million dollars is just a drop in the bucket. It also limits wounded veterans to those that have a special designation from the VA, and it's only -- and the exemption can only be awarded to a nonprofit. So, we were talking, staff and I were talking earlier about this. Even the one notable wounded warrior who had a home built for him here in Temecula, that home was built by a merchant builder, and I'm pretty certain they probably paid the TUMF. There was no exemption at the time. But even if there had been, I don't know that this exemption would have qualified them. And I think that's wrong. I think the program needs to be expanded so that we can provide more homes for more wounded veterans, and I agree with you. These are young people that are going to be living the rest of their lives with that challenge, that disability, that sacrifice that they made on behalf of their country. So, I'm voting yes tonight as a place to start, but I'm going to be asking WR COG staff to continue researching and digging to find ways that we can expand the opportunities so that more veterans can benefit from these exemptions.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Anyone else?
I will add to that, that honestly, when you consider the sacrifices that these young men and women have made, we're not doing nearly enough to support them and to show our appreciation for what they've given for us. So, I would encourage every person, every business owner, everyone in the private sector, to try and consider the things that you can do to support our wounded veterans and the heroes that come back. They've given everything that they have for us, so we need to think of ways to support them and their families. So, having said that, we can cast our votes.
Madam Mayor, let me just quickly read the title.
Okay, thank you, Peter.